The Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission Meeting of October 12, 2025 is now called to order. I will now call the roll. Commissioners, please state here when your name is called. Commissioner Burnett.
Here.
Commissioner Rasby.
Here.
Vice Chair Birch.
Here.
Commissioner Barnett.
Here.
Commissioner Sordi.
Here.
And please note that Commissioner Stump is here as well, and so am I. Please stand if you are able, as I lead us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As the Planning Commission conducts the meeting this evening, we encourage active participation by the public, which is essential to the work of the commission. The public can participate in several ways. Prior to a meeting, written comments about agenda items may be submitted to staff. And during the meeting, there are two opportunities for members of the public to participate. First, during the verbal communications period, an individual may speak on any topic that is not on the agenda. Second, during the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting, any member of the public may speak about an agenda item. You will be advised of the times when to speak on each of these items. If you wish to address the commission tonight during the verbal communications or public hearing agenda item portions, please raise your hand on Zoom, or for those here in person, complete a speaker card and give it to a staff member. When you are called to speak, please come up to the podium and speak directly into the microphone as this meeting is being recorded. You all have three minutes to speak. We will now begin with the verbal communications portion of the meeting, during which members of the public are invited to address the commission on any issue that is not on the agenda for tonight's meeting. Staff will announce when your three-minute time limit is up. I do not have any speaker cards. Are there any? Oh. Is this for the agenda item, one of the agenda items? Okay, perfect. Are there any hands raised on Zoom?
There or not?
Okay. Um, okey doke. So seeing as there's no verbal communications, we will be moving on to the consent calendar. Tonight, we have one item on the consent calendar. The draft minutes of the October 8, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. Before the Planning Commission acts on the consent calendar, any member of the commission or the public may request that this item be removed. Are there any such requests? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar? Commissioner Sordi?
A motion to approve.
Okay, and then Commissioner Stump, seconds? Thank you. Um, I... Great, any discussion? What am I doing? Okay, seeing none, I can now call the question. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. And the motion passes unanimously. We will now move on to our public hearing, starting with item number two. Item two is to consider a request for approval of a conditional use permit application for a new veterinary clinic on property zone CH located at 16150 Los Gatos Boulevard, APN 523-06-038, categorically exempt pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines, Sections 15303, existing facilities. Conditional use permit application U25-007. The applicant is Wendy Zhang and property owner is Harmon Manager Corporation. Um, and before the staff report, can I have a show of hands from commissioners who have visited the property? Great, and are there any disclosures that we need to make? Perfect. Um, and Ms. Merchant, will you be presenting the staff report this evening?
Yes, thank you, Chair. And good evening, Commissioners. Before you tonight is a request for approval of a conditional use permit for a new veterinary hospital on a property zone restricted, highway commercial zone. Uh, the property is currently vacant and its previous use was a fast food restaurant. The subject property is approximately 0.30 acres and is bordered by the King's Court Shopping Center to the north, residential properties to the south and east, and commercial properties to the west. An existing 2,315 square foot, single-story commercial building stands on the property and the clinic, uh, excuse me, the hospital is proposed to occupy, um, the existing space and proposes no expansion or exterior modification as part of the CUP. The applicant has provided details of their operations and justification for the proposed use and that is included in the staff report as, um, Exhibit 4. The applicant proposes to operate the hospital Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Weekend hours of 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. are also included in the draft conditions to allow for potential, uh, future weekend operations. The applicant proposes a maximum of two doctors at any given time, which would require 12 parking spaces under the town code. The subject sites provide a total of 15 onsite parking spaces, including two accessible ADA parking spaces and complies with the town parking requirements. As of today, staff has received no public comments regarding the CUP application. If the CUP is approved, the application will be conditioned to obtain all necessary permits, including a building permit, sign permit, and business license prior to commencing any operations. Based on the findings presented in the staff report, staff recommends approving the request for a conditional use permit for a new veterinary hospital located at 16150 Los Gatos Boulevard. This concludes staff's presentation and staff is available for questions. Thank you.
Uh, yes, Vice Chair Birch.
More of a clarification to confirm, we are only here for the conditional use permit, not for anything to do with the new structure or design.
Correct, and thank you for the question. I would also like to clarify that there are no exterior modifications proposed. Um, should this CUP get approved, there will be a tenant improvement application under a building permit application.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff right now? Okay. We will now open the public portion of the public hearing on item number two and give the applicant an opportunity to address the commission for up to five minutes. So who will be speaking on behalf of the applicant this evening?
Thank you, Chair. There are a number of representatives, and so I'm going to allow Wendy to speak. And again, you have up to five minutes amongst anyone who wishes to present.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Um, thank you for being present. I'm here to introduce a very exciting proposed addition to the community, which is Vassuna Animal Hospital. Um, we are, as mentioned previously, seeking a conditional use permit to renovate and operate a local veterinarian-owned, full-service small animal hospital located at the previously indicated address. Um, we will offer services typical for a community veterinary clinic, which includes wellness care, chronic disease management, surgery, and dentistry. Uh, next slide, please. Um, we believe that by supporting the health and wellbeing of pets, we also support the health, happiness, and peace of mind of their families, and we are very excited to be a part of the community. Um, next slide. Um, as mentioned previously, our proposed operating hours are, um, during normal daytime business hours, Monday to Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. to start. Although, um, if there is a need by the community, we will also like to consider Saturday operations as well. Um, we will not provide overnight boarding. Um, the hospital will employ an estimated, uh, 15 staff with eight or few employees onsite at any given time. Next slide. Um, and so to do so, if we are granted this conditional use permit, we will, as mentioned previously, follow through with a building permit application to fully renovate the existing building. Um, and we will do so with special attention to the design of the space to ensure that the facility is both modern and welcoming, but at the same time, keeping any treatment and animal care areas away from our residential neighbors. Noise and odor have been carefully addressed, and this will further be addressed in our TI, uh, permit, building permit with the building department. Um, animals under medical care will be housed only indoors, and we will not have any outdoor kenneling. Additional sound control measures will also be incorporated into the design. As far as waste management is concerned, um, waste will be securely contained and removed by licensed providers. We plan to follow all city, county, and state regulations. Details of those regulations are outlined on the following slides, and we are happy to address any, um, individual item as well. Um, but, uh, next slide, please. We have a couple of slides outlining, um, every, everything that, uh, is of concern and all of the kind of state and city regulations that we are aware of. Next slide. And these are all just details, um, and how we will address each one. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Um, parking has also been carefully considered. As previously mentioned, the total number of parking spots exceeds city requirements. Um, and finally, to conclude, thank you for your time, and we are looking forward to joining the community. These are some of our, um, overall floor plans. Um, preliminary, again, will be followed up with a full, uh, TI, um, building permit application and a full set of drawings, um, following this conditional use permit approval. Next slide, and that will be the final slide.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions for the applicant team at this time? Uh, yes, Commissioner Burnett.
Uh, so with, um, attention to the, uh, waste that'll be generated, um, I took a look at the county's requirements, and I saw there's one for, um, performing weekly spore testing with records. Is that something that's included on your slide? I didn't see that.
Um, can you clarify the details about the spore test? Is that as it relates to medical waste or, or, um, as it relates to building?
I mean, my understanding from the, reading the Santa Clara County's, um, website is that, um, uh, the only detail they have is render waste non-infectious and perform weekly spore testing with records. So I assume the spore testing would be, you know, interior to the veterinary clinic?
If that is a Santa Clara, um, requirement, we will definitely follow through with, with all requested, um, testing. Um, I don't think we have experience with that specific spore test. So we are, um, def, we'll definitely look, looking to it and, and comply with all regulations.
Thank you very much, and I understand that the conditions of approval include compliance with all federal, state, and local regulations. So, um, that'll be taken care of. Thank you.
And through the chair, I see Roger has his hand up, so I'm going to allow him to talk in case he wants to add anything to that question.
Yes. Can you guys hear me okay? So, uh, just to further clarify on the spore testing, this is related to sterility of, uh, of our items for, for operation. We do use an autoclave, which will meet the, uh, the spore testing requirements. So we do use it in practice. A sterilizer for the hospital.
Okay, thank you. Does that answer your question? Do you have another question, Commissioner Burnett?
I was somewhat confused by the requirement by the county for, uh, weekly spore testing with records. So is the autoclave somehow, those procedures recorded in some manner?
I don't believe they're recorded. It's just standard practice for us to use the autoclave to sterilize our, uh, items.
Okay, understood. Well, like I said, the compliance will be taken care of by the conditions.
Are there any other questions for the applicant team at this time? Okay, thank you. We will now open the public portion of, or now, sorry. We will now invite comments from members of the public on item two. And if I do not have any speaker cards, and I believe everyone here is for item number three, are there any hands raised on Zoom for members of the public that wish to speak on item number two?
There or not?
Okay. Um, then, does the applicant team, do you want to make a closing statement? If so, you have three minutes to speak.
I think we are, um, all set on our end. We're just very excited to, to be a part of the community.
Okay, thank you. We will, um, are there any additional questions for the applicant from Commissioners? Last chance? Okay, thank you for, very much for the presentation and your, um, and answering our questions. We will now close the public portion of the public hearing on item two, and I invite Commissioners to ask questions of staff, provide comments, and eventually propose a motion. Anyone have any questions to start off with? Oh, I... I'm sorry, can we actually very briefly reopen the public? Sorry, I've had a very long day. Can we reopen the public hearing very briefly? I just had one question about the hours of operation.
Yes.
Okay, um, so, uh, many, oftentimes when we see, uh, CUPs, we get a... The request is for the maximum hours and days that will be, that the business could be in operation. And so right now, the proposal is Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Um, if, has your, has the applicant team discussed with town staff if you decide to be open on Saturday, how that process might change? They have Saturday hours on the CUP right now. Okay, they do, for sure. Okay, sorry, I, like I said, it's been a long day. Okay, never mind. Are you, I guess that 6:00 p.m. does not seem, sorry.
Yeah, I can read the proposed condition, um, into the record. So right now, what's proposed is Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 6:00 p.m., and Saturdays and Sundays, 8:00 to 2:00 p.m.
Oh, that's for the CUP, correct? Okay, so my question is, I guess, if you would like to stay open for longer on Saturday or past 6:00 p.m., can you, do you think that's a possibility? And if so, why didn't you request a CUP for longer than those hours?
Wendy or Roger, you can unmute yourself to answer the question.
I think at this point, um, we're just seeking up to 6:00 p.m.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. Um, okay, we will now reclose the public portion, and, um, I guess that my question now is for staff. If they do want to change those, what does the process look like in, for adjusting a CUP?
Thank you for the question. So if they wanted to modify any of the conditions, whether it was hours or one of the other conditions of approval, they'd have to submit a modification to the CUP, which would come back before the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you. Okay, does anyone else have any questions for staff? Comments?
Chair, I have no comments except to say that, um, to me, this is, I think, a relatively straightforward and simple one. I think it's a wonderful reuse of currently vacant building in a great location, and, um, I think it's been thoughtfully considered and developed, and so I would move to, uh, approve the request for the CUP and make all findings as set forth in the staff report, together with the conditions of approval attached there, too.
Thank you. Is there a second, Commissioner, or Vice Chair Birch?
I will second.
Thank you. Um, and discussion? Okay, I would just like to add for, I think, the entire commission that I want to echo what Commissioner Rasby said. Um, it's a, this space has been vacant for quite some time. This seems like a really practical use for that space, especially considering the, you know, parking, that there actually is available parking already on this, um, property, which I know can sometimes be a challenge, especially for some of the other veterinary clinics that we even have in town. So, um, it's very thoughtful, and all of our, you know, didn't have any questions because everything was included in the original staff report for us. So I will now call the question. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And the motion passes unanimously. And are there any, um, appeal rights?
Yes, sir, thanks, Chair. So anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the Planning Commission can appeal that decision to the Town Council. Forms are available in the Clerk's office and online. There is a fee for filing the appeal, and the appeal must be filed within 10 days.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, we will now be moving on to item three, which is to discuss the town's regulations applicable to below-grade square footage. And, um, I don't believe anyone should have any disclosures about this. Are there any disclosures before we have the staff report? Okay, Mr. Mullen will be giving the staff report this evening, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair, and good evening. At the Chair's request, staff is bringing forward a discussion of town regulations related to below-grade square footage. Um, as some background is provided in your staff report, the current town regulations were preceded by the seller policy, which was, uh, adopted in 2002. This policy was considered by the Policy Committee starting in 2016, um, who recommended that it be rescinded and that the regulations be incorporated into the town code. The Planning Commission then considered an ordinance, um, concerning what became termed as below-grade square footage in 2017. During the Planning Commission review process, staff engaged the architecture and real estate professionals community to request input and, um, specific recommendations on how to achieve the town's goal of reducing the bulk and mass of residential buildings, uh, and the proposed ordinance. The commission then forwarded a recommendation to the council that included revised language that would count all below-grade areas toward the FAR if, at any point on any elevation, there is more than, uh, four feet of that area exposed on the exterior wall. After consideration by the council and input by the community, the ordinance was adopted without that added language, and below-grade square footage, uh, remained exempt, uh, in certain conditions. In short, the town code allows below-grade square footage as a means to provide hidden square footage in lieu of visible mass. Uh, below-grade square footage doesn't count when it meets certain criteria, specifically that it be located within the footprint of the building above, accepting light wells, of course, and when it is limited to only one location on the property. When those conditions are not met, uh, the portions, um, would then be counted towards FAR. In preparation for tonight's discussion, staff advertised the meeting on social media and through a direct email to the architecture and real estate professionals community. Uh, two emails were received, inquiring if any changes are proposed at this time. Staff clarified that tonight, the, the goal tonight is to have a discussion about below-grade square footage. Um, and one of the emails, uh, senders responded with, uh, that they would not be in favor of any changes that would then count below-grade square footage. Um, so staff looks forward to tonight's discussion. We're available to support the discussion and answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions for staff at this time? Okay, we, uh, will now open up for public comment. Um, invite members of the public to speak on item three. I have three speaker cards here, so, and if you want, if you are on Zoom, you can please raise your hand at this time. Um, first, we are going to have Lee Quintana. No, you don't want to go first. Oh, okay, sorry, I thought you guys were telling her to go first. Okay. Sorry. Okay, I have Tony Jeans up first, please. And as you know, you will have three minutes. Please adjust the microphone as you see fit.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm surprised to see this on the agenda. Uh, I thought it was something that was decided and well-settled. It works very well in this town as it is. You can be looking to do one of two things to put it on the agenda. Either eliminate below-grade square footage from, uh, its current, uh, not counting, uh, in the FAR, uh, which I would violently oppose, uh, or you could tweak some of the rules and regulations, which I think at the moment are fairly well-balanced. Um, for example, San Jose allows up to six feet to be protruding above grade. Monteserino allows three feet. We're at four feet, which is in the middle, which is reasonable. It also works well with the Victorian homes. If you go below four feet, you have difficulty putting basements under a Victorian home and calling it a, uh, uh, non-counting F-floor area, uh, because that's about the area that would be protruding above grade. So I think, um, the town has done a good job and has got a very good set of rules around this. Um, if you want to liberalize it and have multiple locations on the property, for example, under the ADU that you might be creating, um, I would encourage that as a liberalization of the policy. I don't see the requirement to, um, if you're looking to keep bulk and mass down, I don't think it really matters where on the property you have your basement. I think that the advent of, um, Uber and things like that mean that, um, we are having less need for cars. So I don't think increase of people in a house is really a deterrent for encouraging below-grade square footage. So, um, I think the count, the town has it right. I'm, once again, I'm surprised to see it back on the agenda. I think it's one of the policies that you've done very well. Now, others that I would... There are others that I would like to see on the agenda to discuss, but we're not here to do that now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Yes.
Just to follow up on your ADU comment, so effectively, what that would do, if you allowed an ADU to follow up to this policy, it would, I guess it would change it from one location on the property to perhaps applying it to a detached ADU and having that be able to have some exempt square footage?
At the moment, you're allowed one area, like normally, the main house, but sometimes the ADU by itself, if there's none in the main house, to have exempt square footage. If you're looking at this policy to reduce bulk and mass, having below-grade square footage under an ADU count or not count doesn't impact bulk and mass at all. So, if you are looking at liberalizing this policy, rather than tightening it up, which we won't know until you close the public hearing and discuss, I would look at that as a consideration, because I don't see why only one portion of the property is allowed to have below-grade square footage. So, that was my, my comment. I've designed three or 400 homes in and around Los Gatos over the last 30, 40 years, and I would say that a good percentage of them have basements, and people use them very effectively.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the speaker? Okay, no, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Next, I have Noel Cross Architect. And you can adjust the microphone. Thank you. Sorry. I'm sorry. You guys gave me the cards in that order, so.
Hello. I was on that committee in 2002, along with five other architects, and they were, the AIA provided six names to the planning department, and we helped craft that ordinance. And I think it's very well-written. I would echo Tony's comments in that, you know, but, again, we're dealing with this again. We dealt with this pre-COVID. And I think they did a good job of, you know, the ordinance is really well-written, and it's kind of on four basic things, which is, you know, the 25-foot sloping height length, height, the 35-foot overall height, the grading policy, which limits all sorts of different kinds of cuts and fills, and the hidden basements that don't count. And please don't mess with it. It's very well-crafted. It survived for 20 years. It's worked very well. And the one tweak they made was the language in 2017, which got rid of the basement cellar thing, which was confusing at best. And it's now correctly listed as hidden square footage, which it is. And if you, if it's hidden square footage, every architect will tell you, why do you care? It really shouldn't matter. If you can't see it, why, why would it matter? And again, I beg you to, this is a very well-crafted ordinance. It's very well-balanced. It works. You take out one of the legs of that stool, and it's going to fall. And then, I think the most dire consequence of this would be that you're going to create haves and have-nots. You're going to have 20-plus years of people being able to do it, and then, all of a sudden, the barn door closes, and nobody else gets to do it. And it's going to create havoc. And so, I really implore you that this has been, it's stood the test of time. It's worked very well for 20-plus years, and I don't see any reason to change it. I'm available for questions.
Are there any questions for the speaker? I have, I do have one question. I think that part of the, or the reason that I, you know, recommended this be brought onto our agenda is that there's a lot of misunderstanding with regards to how the public interprets this, not your clients necessarily, but the public, especially at projects that come before the planning commission, as I know all of you are very well-aware of explaining the countable square footage versus the actual and everything. So, do you have any recommendations about how the town could perhaps better communicate the intent of the policy and/or the importance of it, so that the pub, you know, so that the public better understand?
I suppose so, yeah. I mean, it's, you know, we're architects. We, we deal with this. We talk to the planners. We, we come up with creative ways to solve our clients' problems and get, and not so much, I don't want to say get around these things, but make it work within the language that's there. And I have pointed out many times to planners that, I say, you know, you don't, your code is silent on this. I hate to say it, but it's silent on this one issue. And then, I hate, you know, come to find out, two years later, they changed the wording so that it wasn't silent. And so, we know exactly where all the holes are and what the, you know, and the ways to get what we, what we, our clients want. And like I said, over the last 20 years, it's really stood the test of time with very few tweaks. And I think if there was some way to, you know, it's, it's kind of like trying to tell, it's like a narrative, you know, you come up with a narrative to tell the public. There's so many people that misunderstand things. It's complicated. Our job is extremely complicated, and we succeed at it because we actually know all the little things. There's, there might be, I only mentioned four major things. There's, there's 20 other little things. The grading policy has got eight things in it. You know, you can get, you can cut eight, more than eight feet for a garage, but you can't cut the driveway to get into the garage, you know? Something that doesn't make sense to me, but Los Altos Hills allows, you know? And so, there's a lot of complexity. It's not easy for the public to understand. If there was some way to characterize it as, you know, in plain language, I think, it's, it's really hard to summarize it. It's so complicated. And that's why it works.
Yeah.
There's no way you can do anything to get around this. It's, there's, if you try to do this, there's something, there's another rule that says, nope. Sorry, the grading policy's got you there.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you for, yeah, thank you. And are there any other questions? Speaker? No. Thank you for being here tonight. Next, I have up Gary Kohlstadt.
Good evening, everybody. On behalf of this architectural, real estate, construction community that we have, it's a pretty close-knit community. I feel very fortunate that we have this. The email went around, and to a man, to a person, sorry, everybody was like, what? What's the impetus of it? What's going on here? So, honestly, it would have been very helpful to hear what you guys are going to speak about, I'm presuming, after you close the public hearing, prior to the public hearing, because we don't know where we're, where we're throwing darts, right? As the other speakers have said, they, we all support this policy 100%. We think it's very well-crafted. We think it's fair. We think it's very compatible with all of the other jurisdictions. And as Tony Jeans said, that Monteserino has a little different policy, it's actually effectively the same. It's just the way that they, where they measure is a different measuring point, but it effectively is the same thing. So, really, Saratoga, Monteserino, even the county, has these things. And Saratoga even has a little more liberal policy on basements. I can't help but think that maybe it's one of my projects that spurred you guys to, and feel, you know, say, go ahead, you know? But really, we need, we need the basements, and we've always questioned why it was a big deal. You can't see below ground. You can drive up the street, and there'd be, might be 20 houses, and eight of them might have basements, and you wouldn't know. And so, we're all wondering, what's the problem? What is the concern? You had alluded to it earlier about the impression of what's going on. It's, it's just, we, we all need to have parameters, and the parameters are set from FARs. And by the way, I checked all the, all the other cities. We're very remarkably compatible with Monteserino and Saratoga as far as FARs. And some people don't think that, but it's, it's really pretty close. Really, you're increasing the property values with basements. On the hillside, it's almost impossible to design a house without a basement. And I think that you might want to take a look at the hillside basement ordinance versus a flatland basement, because I think they have different effects. But honestly, I think that we all spent quite a bit of time working on this in 2017, and we all, I'm speaking on behalf of everybody, that we all really are comfortable with the way it's at now.
Okay, thank you. Are there, does anyone else have any questions for the speaker? Okay, I have two questions. First, you mentioned that changing the policy for hillsides versus flat. I mean, yeah, can you elaborate on that?
There, obviously, there are two different animals, right? If you look at the, in the flatlands on any given suburban street, if there's a basement there, is there a problem? Is that, is that causing the problem? Or is it called, in the, in the public's eye, or is it more on the hillsides? And then, what is that problem on the hillsides, right? I don't, we don't know what the root of the, of this question is, honestly.
Okay. And then, I just will ask the same question again. So, I think that one of the, well, ultimately, I first do want to acknowledge that, yes, the way that this, you know, has to be noticed and comes up and everything is not, does not be, we can't discuss it at the meeting when we opt to put it on the agenda, which does then make it difficult to then know why we're, why we've opted to put it on the agenda, because everyone, we haven't, we haven't had an opportunity to discuss it. So, I understand the frustration, and I know that you all are very aware of the process that we have to follow. However, from my perspective, why I supported this coming up tonight is because at so many of our hearings, there is this frustration from the public and neighbors, which I know ends up being a pain in your guys' butt, when staff is here, too, with regards to the, the understanding of, of that policy, where it came from, how it's being used, et cetera, and just the fact on paper that people don't understand the difference between countable and not-countable square footage. And this folds into the ADU situation also, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So, do you have any recommendations about how we could better communicate that with the public, so that there is less frustration at the final phases of these projects?
Well, that's, so that's a, that's a very constructive question. And so, I may not have an answer off the top of my head, but we can certainly work at it as a group to help facilitate this. I would, I would give your audience a lot more credit. They're a very, very educated and smart community. I think people just get emotional. So, when you start to just look at it as rationally, and you start to look at the way that the rules are written, and every other city is the same way, I think it's more of an emotional issue.
Okay, thank you. My last, oh, yeah. My last question, I guess, would just be that I, I think that the other, the one, the one part of the ordinance is that the in lieu, the in lieu of above-ground square footage. I think that that is the part that is difficult sometimes for people to get, wrap their heads around.
Right.
So, would you be in support of that, that aspect changing? How would you acknowledge that, like, we can't say, I mean, there's no way to say you have to prove that it's in lieu of above-ground square footage? So, I guess, you know, is that, is that aspect even important in it? Or is it just adding to the confusion and the ability to have that emotional response?
Very, very good. Very, very good. We have design guidelines, right? The standards and guidelines, which talk about theories and, and all these things, right? But then, there's the ordinance, right? There's the municipal code that's just strict, black and white. Every other city treats it like it's black and white. You can build this much square footage on this lot, period. You can do a basement like this. This is the rule of the basement, right? In Los Gatos, we kind of combine the two. We, we bring in all these, it, it, right? We mix them up, and we, I think we confuse the ordinance as not being black and white. And that's the, probably the biggest complaint that I receive from my clients, is that things are not black and white. So, why are we throwing these wannabes in lieu of, right? It actually, de facto, is in lieu of, it can be, but why is that important? What is that? And I never actually supported that one phrase myself. That's the one phrase that I don't really support. It's a great goal, but I don't think it has to be a mandatory thing.
Okay, yeah, I mean, yes. Okay. Any other questions for the speaker? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I have one more. Is there anyone on, with their hands raised on Zoom?
There are no hands raised.
Okay. Then, our last speaker is Lee Quintana.
I'm going to approach this from a very different angle. I'm going to start with saying that the phrase in, below-ground square feet in lieu of visible mass was written into the 2020 general plan because there was acknowledgement that people wanted more living space. There was also acknowledgement that we didn't want to add additional massing to our homes that were modest in size, et cetera. I will tell you that I was one of three members of the ad hoc committee that wrote that language, that suggested that language, because we were recognizing that problem of people wanting more square footage, but not wanting to make the homes more massive. That meant to us that the below-ground square footage would be counted, and by counting it, you would avoid adding the additional mass. There's one other person of that committee that is still here in town, and I don't think he saw the announcement for this meeting. It was accepted by the general plan committee. It was adopted by the council. I agree with the architects that for their clients, they don't want it to be counted because it's not in lieu of, it's because they are adding the mass in addition to. They're adding the mass on the top, and then, they're getting mass at the bottom that they're not getting counted for. And that was the direct opposite of what we were trying to achieve. I don't know when it came up that the provisions of how it was implemented with, with this fancy calculations of the, the ground underneath the basement, if it was a little crooked and part of it was less than four feet and whatever, that, that didn't get counted, because no matter how you look at it, it's livable space, and if it's livable space, it should be counted. At that time, I think Palo Alto said they would allow you to count At that time, I think Palo Alto said they would allow you to count 50% of it and the rest could go to above ground. But also, this has a big impact on historic structures. I could say a lot more, but I'm not for people, so I didn't get to that.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Birch, I think, has a question for you.
Since you were on the ad hoc committee, then I guess, and you partially answered this, but, so having watched many of the meetings that you've seen us half through the years, do you feel like this is being used as intended?
No.
Okay.
And it was strictly, I think, enforced for several years when the three authors were all here.
Okay. Are there, yes, Commissioner Burnett.
I'm trying to understand what you're saying, that is it your intent that if someone has a basement, they should have less above ground living space?
I'm saying that the lots have FARs. FAR is living space, whether it's in the basement or on the first floor or on the second floor, it's living space.
So the architects have pointed out that it's invisible.
It itself is invisible, but the FAR that isn't being counted, that then is attached to the existing building, is visible. And the wording was "in lieu of visible space." So this is not in lieu of visible space. It's putting usable space, but not counting it. So the remainder of the FAR that already hasn't been used can be added to the original structure or new structure. It adds to the mass and bulk.
Okay, so I don't understand that response, but maybe another commissioner can follow up on it.
Are there any other questions for the speaker? Thank you, Ms. Cantona. Okay, are there any hands raised on Zoom?
There are not.
Okay. So we will now close the public portion of the, for item number three. And I invite commissioners to ask questions of staff and provide some comments and have a discussion. I guess I will lead it off and then I'll hand it over to Commissioner Burnett. So from my perspective, the, separate from whether or not I like how it is being used or not, which is not really my, like, in my role right now, I shouldn't, that's not what I should be, I wasn't on the original committee or ad hoc committee that wrote this. I was not on the commission when this was updated. My issue is that it says "in lieu," and that's not really, it's not, just the way that it is written in the code is not really enforceable via our decision-making. And that is confusing, I think, to us and to the public. And I, it is just frustrating, I think, from our, from so many people's perspectives to continue to have hearings and have to re-explain and go over the different total square footage versus countable square footage and all of the things and how it calculates the FAR. And I know that it's complicated because building houses and all of this is complicated. But I think that there could be possible solutions to how we could, you know, better communicate this, so we don't have to keep explaining and hear the same thing over and over from various groups of concerned individuals. So that being said, Commissioner Burnett had some comments, and then please, everyone else join in.
Thank you. So I want to follow up from Lee Cantona's, what she said. And just for concerning Commissioner Barnett's inquiry about how this works, if you have a basement that is 1,000 square foot, and then you want to add a 2,000 square foot home, let's say after you do all of your calculations and you have a 5,000 square foot lot, if you don't have to count the basement that, towards the FAR, then you can take that 1,000 feet and now you have a basement, but you don't have to count it. And now you can make a 2,000 square foot home above. So that's how this works. And the spirit of the 2002 resolution was to have, to count that basement square footage in lieu of adding additional, the additional square footage above ground. So that's why you got an increase in the height and the bulk of the home. That was changed in 2017 when they, when the town changed it and was passed, that we would now count that basement, we would now not count that basement FAR. And this is what my concerns are now. This was 20 years ago and things have changed. Our town policy, our general plan, our housing element, all is looking at affordability, affordable homes. We're building, want affordable homes at the housing element. We want, our general plan wants us to have affordable homes. The result of this 2017 change has ended up reducing residents' choices, increasing density, it has changed the neighborhood character, and it has eliminated smaller homes. Homes have become more expensive because now they're larger. You have a basement and then you have the full FAR. So homes are more expensive. And especially like in the smaller neighborhoods, this is where the impact is really being happening. And what I'm going to say is that we need, maybe we can keep some of this, but I think something needs to be tweaked, especially in our zoning, like our R1D zones, where you have smaller homes, you have smaller lots. And like the R1D, you can have maximal, maximum coverage on that lot. There's no, like in the RM, R-1, there's a 40% coverage. R-1D, it's maximum coverage. And I know it also affects the, you know, the side and the front. But those are areas we can look at. But I'm feeling, the big goal here now is to try and preserve the smaller homes again. So what, to go back to my, what I'm, the homes have become more expensive because they're larger, so smaller families can't afford them, first-time buyers can't afford them, single adults are priced out, and there's dwindling numbers of these smaller homes, because now we've had all this advantage of not counting the FAR. So now what happens, now comes along the ADUs. Well, isn't that terrific? Now, in general, ADUs are exempt from counting towards the FAR. And I will say, there was one project that really triggered this for me, where you had, the home actually ended up in square footage to be almost 4,000 square feet, but in reality, what we counted, it was about 1,800, because it had a basement. And it also had an attached ADU that we didn't have to count. So this is what, and then being on the historic preservation committee and the planning commission, what I'm seeing is the smaller homes are dwindling. And like I said, the intent of the general plan was to preserve more affordable homes as well as the housing element. And so, as I say, as one, we are trying to build affordable homes. And on the other hand now, because of our zoning laws and the FARs and the state laws, we're contradicting what we're trying to achieve. So I have some suggestions, some solutions. We could count some or all below grade footage as FAR. Or we could modify the FAR formula to reduce the maximum FAR for one or more zoning designations, like the R1D area. We could remove the ability to request deviations from the requirements, the town council requirements for non-conforming lots. I think we could remove the ability to request to exceed the FAR that currently exists in the town code. And I think that one, we should really work on. And also, we should include the vaulted ceilings. I mean, you have these homes, a huge vaulted ceiling, and I think that should be counted towards the FAR, because it increases the, it increases the overall massing of a home. So, and then we could also consider reducing the maximum height for one or more zones, reduce the building lot coverage in some of the zones, like the R1D, and increase setbacks for one or more zoning designations. So all I'm seeing here, I think we're missing the point. The point is that we're losing our smaller homes, because bigger homes are being built, because they're getting the FAR from the basement that they don't have to count, they're getting, they don't have to count ADUs. And so larger, more expensive homes are built. And it's leading to, you know, that's the trend, but we're losing our first-time homeowners, single people, seniors. And so I think there's got to be, that's why I sort of wanted this to come forward, that we could look at this again. I think it needs to be looked at again. It's been over, it's been since, it's been, like you're saying, 20 years. I think it's more than 20 years, but I think we need to look at it again.
Before I call on Vice Chair Birch, I would just like to say that I, like, I want to acknowledge, I think that we can all acknowledge that the loss of naturally affordable housing in town, like, is a concern. I'm not convinced that this is the way to address it, but I do think that that is something that is worth a discussion and is a concern for everyone here, especially with regards to younger and single and older individuals having spaces, places to be on in town. Vice Chair Birch.
Agreed. This is a question to staff, because I just heard a couple of things that maybe I'm confused. I was looking on Exhibit 1, Page 3, which is, I think, Page 41 of the staff overall report. This is dated 2002, and it clearly states that seller, as defined here, shall not be included in the FAR. But I just feel like what everybody just said is up until more recently, we were counting this square footage against the FAR, and that's how we were reducing the overall massing. Can you clarify when we?
Thank you for that question. So you're correct, the 2002 seller policy exempted sellers from being counted as FAR. What happened in 2017 was that the policy was rescinded and incorporated into the code. And if you look through the policy that is talking about sellers and basements, the regulations in there are almost verbatim into the code. During the process of the policy committee meetings, the planning commission, and then ultimately the council, there was some language added to a draft ordinance that was not incorporated into the final adopted ordinance, that stated if any portion of a, what was called seller back then, protruded from the ground more than four feet, then the entire seller would count, even the parts that were completely buried. That was not incorporated, that followed outreach to the community that you see here and discussion with the planning commission and their presentations to the planning commission and the council.
Okay, thank you. But the phrase "in lieu of" was added in 2017 or 2002? That has been all in there the entire time?
The purpose on Page 41, General Plan Policy L.P. P. 2.3 states, "Encourage basements and sellers to provide hidden square footage in lieu of visible mass." That is from 2002. And that was carried forward as the intent statement in the now code section, which I will not rattle off from memory.
That's okay. Can I make one statement following that, though?
Yeah.
Because I, it's the "in lieu of" that I have actually found has always been the issue. That is a very subjective phrase. I don't think it's up to me to determine if what they've put in a basement is in lieu of something they need upstairs. And it's been something that has been debated up here for as long as I've been on the planning I also hate that we've lost any form, you know, any type of affordable housing. But I also recognize that housing trends and family needs change. I think the trend of just having larger family homes is what is happening right now. So I'm not going to dispute that. My concern, and what I had hoped we could also talk about here today, is that phrase. That is a subjective phrase, that is in the gray, and that makes it really difficult for us up here to make decisions, because it's very black and white. So hopefully, we can maybe get some clarification or decide if there's a recommendation we make to council about wording or something. I would like to talk about that.
I just have a follow-up question about the language in this general plan policy, that this is in the land use policy that is currently, that our current land use policy because of the rescinding of the 2040 general plan, correct?
Mr. Mullins is looking through that now, I think.
Yeah, I will say while I looked that up, that the community design element, which is also one of the rescinded policies from the 2020 general plan, so that's the active general plan, so CD 6.3 encourages basements and sellers to provide hidden square footage in lieu of visible mass. I can see if it also exists in the land use element as well.
Okay. Yeah, it says LP 2 dot 3. So what this statement, the purpose?
For clarification, I think that may be referencing the previous general plan, given the timing of the adoption of the 2020 general plan, which was maybe happening in parallel to this.
Okay, that's what I was like, I wasn't sure if that was the previous. Okay, so if we could just see, know what the language is in the current, whatever version of the general plan we're using, we're going off of.
Sorry. I can confirm, I don't see any reference to the term "in lieu" in the land use element, but in the community design element from 2020, which is the current active community design element, it does say, encourage, you know, encourage, reading off the wrong sheet here, encouraging basements and sellers to provide hidden square footage in lieu of visible mass.
Okay, so that same, okay, encourage, so that same phrase is in there. Okay, thank you for that clarification. I do agree that it's next when it is in lieu. That is the intent. However, in saying that something is in, just having that in our code is not clear at this point. And so I guess I do have a question for staff, just about how we have been interpreting that part of the code and how, I mean, why it's not enforceable, I guess.
Yeah, sure. I mean, we talked about it and we've talked about it at multiple hearings. The zoning code says you can have, you can fill this box with, you know, whether it's setbacks, coverage, height, FAR, above ground, as long as you're compatible with the, you know, immediate neighborhood, right? If it's not compatible with the immediate neighborhood, staff's going to elevate that up to the planning commission. Some get elevated even when they do meet that threshold. I think what Commissioner Burnett and others with the "in lieu" piece, you know, and I think we're looking at it, trying to explain it of, okay, I've got an FAR of 2,000. I'm going to interpret it that I'm going to put 1,000 feet in lieu of 1,000 feet up above, isn't realistic. So that's why I think, one of the reasons probably why, when the planning commission made the recommendation, I think it was the policy committee first, but to, if more than four feet, six thou, you count the whole thing, didn't pass muster at the council, right? So, you know, ultimately, tonight, we're here to have a great conversation, you guys have a great discussion. We'll, you know, offer our input where appropriate. But ultimately, it's, you know, does the majority of the commission want to, you know, ask staff to bring this forward to council to see if they want to direct staff? ask staff to bring this forward to council to see if they want to direct staff ultimately to, you know, do any code or other policy update work, which would then go back through its normal process, back through the planning commission, and then ultimately council.
Okay, thank you. And then, I guess the only time that we would be able to really interpret that in, that this space, it wasn't being used in lieu, is if it, if they were also asking for an exception to the FAR or the height or massing in some way, shape, or form. Is that a okay interpret, I'm just trying to?
The planning commission can interpret it any way they want for each application, which I think they do.
I know, but.
And ultimately.
From legally, a legal perspective of Gabrielle, I guess, is what.
So, from a legal perspective, a phrase that starts with the word "encourage" can't trump a black and white requirement that's in the ordinance.
Okay. 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 Vice Chair Birch, oh, sorry, Commissioner Sordi was up, and then Barnett, Barnett, and then Vice Chair Birch.
Thank you. For me, I just wanted to make a comment. I think the issue separates itself, well, I consider basements and planned view that are wrapped all the way around on four sides on a flat lot to be one issue, and I'm totally okay with the exemption for basements, I'll just say that. I'm open to being persuaded, but I'm comfortable with it because it's invisible, if not for light wells and other things in stairwells where you can kind of tell that they have a basement, but you have to look closely. Compare that to hillside conditions, where we've had projects recently where, we've got a project benched into the hillside, you see the full height of the building from the face of the building, and then, of course, the grade's wrapping around three sides, and they get an exemption, and that's right. I'm open to more discussion and the possibility of maybe tweaking something, because the fact of the matter is, you don't see it on three sides, but on one side you do. You, you see the full face of the building, and I understand why, when the grade falls away at some point, that square footage counts, and then when it's, you know, below grade, then it doesn't. I still think that's a reasonable way to approach it, and I think that's really common up and down hillside communities on the peninsula and all the way down into the South Bay. So, for me, it kind of, I'm totally okay with basements that are completely wrapped on four sides being exempt. I think I will be really hard to persuade otherwise. I think that's fair. I don't see it as bulk and mass, I see it as an opportunity for people to explore more creative designs and have a bigger house and have more level of square footage with little or no impact on the community. So, I guess I'll just sum up where I'm at right now with that, and we'll leave it at that for now, so.
Commissioner Barnett, did you have a?
I have a question and then a number of comments. So, Mr. Mullen, can you refer to the residential design guidelines as they deal with this issue?
Thank you for that question. So, the residential design guidelines, which still uses the old term cellar for the record, they exempt sellers from FAR on two pages and discuss the use of sellers as a means to reduce effective bulk. There's also a short section on historic homes, but that's the residential design guidelines.
Yeah, okay, thanks so much. So, my comments are as follows. The ordinance is limited to below-grade sellers, so there's obviously no impact, visible impact. I'm willing to consider, consider Mr. Sordi's remark on, on hillsides. The purpose of the FAR is to preserve the neighborhood's scale and massing, which not related at all to seller space. Sellers provide additional living space that may include family members to help them, given the land prices and residential prices here, and actually contribute to preserving the small scale of the town character. By leasing out, sellers' owners may be able to secure revenue stream that would be important to seniors, for example. They can help to address the housing needs of Los Gatos residents, potentially providing space for lower-income families. The high land prices that we're all well, aware of justify the need, in my mind, to maximize the legal size of the residence, and sellers allow that additional use. And the general plan goal LU-1, to preserve, promote, and protect existing small-town character and quality of life, encourages the production of housing that meets the needs of all economic segments of the town, including lower and moderate incomes households. So, I can envision, for example, adult children returning to their parents' home because it's not affordable. They're reducing the demand for housing, other housing, the small homes that we talked about, and affordability, of course, is kind of a joke in this town. Okay, and, and then we've heard from the staff about the applicable guidelines, which, in my name, my mind, make a lot of sense. So, those are my overall comments, I guess, with a particular emphasis on the idea that sellers might, may very well help reduce the housing demand in the town, and obviously that they, they help to reduce the scale and mass of the house by allowing more space downstairs. Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Raspe?
Thank you, Chair. Just two points. First, if, I want to follow up on a comment from Commissioner Sordi, from staff. The scenario where he describes a hillside home where a portion of the below-grade or basement or cellar, whatever you call it, is below-grade, but as the ground falls away, it becomes exposed. For purposes of our current ordinance, how is that counted? Is it 100% not counted because it's all below grade?
If you bear with me, I can provide a diagram that might clarify things.
Thank you.
If I can get Zoom to cooperate for me. So, this is a real simplistic and rather extreme view of grade dropping with, with a home. So, moving left to right, as the grade drops with each of these lower-level stories on a hillside home, this is a section view. Those portions that are hashed, those are the portions that are not exposed on this, on the wall more than four feet. And when you get to that four-foot break point, then the area becomes counted as floor area. So, the areas that are not hashed count as floor area because the visible mass is now greater than four feet. So, in this scenario, you see two lower levels with this hillside home stepping down the slope, and you've got two chunks of the house that are exempt from the floor area ratio.
And just, just to add through the chair, so this diagram shows it breaking in the middle. We do have scenarios where the full face of a wall, as Mr. Sordi mentioned, is exposed, but that line that currently is taking a drastic march down at the four-foot line or above, it's completely buried. So, none of it would count at that point.
Perfect. No, thank you for that explanation, and that diagram is extraordinarily helpful. So, Chair, if I can, I'll just give you my thoughts. I, I think I'm largely aligned with Commissioner Sordi. I largely support the ordinance as drafted. It with, I think it accomplishes its purpose, it reduces the bulk and mass. I'd agree that the "in lieu" language is confusing, and perhaps we may want to revisit that for purposes of educating the public and making this planning commission and future planning commission's jobs easier. But I think, as Town Attorney has advised, at least it's in an effective state, it is language that is not mandatory, but rather is persuasive in its tone. Couple of other points, I find that if we were to change the law, as the architects before us have noted, I think we would put ourselves at a competitive disadvantage vis-à-vis newer homes versus older homes and other jurisdictions. I think our staff report puts together 12 or 13 jurisdictions that currently allow below-grade building without counting it. If we were to somehow put ourselves at a competitive disadvantage vis-à-vis those other jurisdictions, I think that doesn't help the town. I understand the concerns on affordable housing, and I share those concerns as well, we have a great need, but I understand the arguments that both Commissioners Burnett and Barnett have raised that address the issues from different directions. And so, I don't know what the right answer there is. I'm not sure this is that forum for this discussion, but I think we should be mindful of it as we go through it. And one last point, I think one of the architects mentioned perhaps extending the below-grade to ADUs. I would not be in favor of extending it any further. It seems to me containing below-grade construction to one location on a lot serves its purpose, and anything more than that, I think, just creates more issues. Those are my thoughts.
Vice Chair Birch?
I think that was very, very well put, Commissioner Raspe. And I, and I agree with pretty much everything you said. I'm still going to say, if there was a way to get rid of the "in lieu of" phrase, I would support that because I have found that through the number of years of having applicants come, whether it's in the hillside or here, or down in town, that winds up being the thing that I feel like causes inconsistency in how we look at them. I do think that's the part that causes the confusion with the public, because to them, they're like, well, they have a bedroom in the basement, so they shouldn't have a bedroom upstairs, and that's not for us to decide. So, I don't know, I don't even know if I would have a consensus up here, but I think to me, that, that's, that's probably what's causing some of the difficulty we have in making these decisions up here as a commission, and that might make that a little bit more black and white. I also would not necessarily support changing what's in the hillside, because those are some very difficult lots, and I, I think the way we've been looking at it and where it's below-grade has been working well for allowing people to construct family homes on difficult lots.
Before Commissioner Barnett, I just want to confirm that Commissioner Stump, he's on vocal rest tonight. Do you, is there anything that you wanted, you're good. Okay, thank you. Didn't want to be ignoring you fully. Commissioner Barnett?
Thank you, and I want to thank my fellow commissioners for their opinions on this very important issue that I have strong feelings about, obviously. Saratoga does actually include basement space in the FAR, so that is one town, and that is similar to Los Gatos, and we're not a big city. Oh, really? I have the, it's right here.
We can, we can hold, we can hold the audience, we'll clarify with the commission should the question come up. I think that, I think the confusion is that they have not gone to a below-grade square footage definition like we did. They still have a cellar and a basement definition. It's probably what the case is. And so, even before our new code, we counted basement, we just didn't count cellar. So, but we can look into that as well.
So, I guess my printout is wrong that I just got yesterday. Okay, so, first of all, second of all, I guess I have to redo math or take a math test because I still feel that giving FAR, counting the basement in the FAR does add bulk and mass above. It, you know, it's just, I don't understand how my commissioners don't get that, or maybe it's that I'm the one who doesn't get it. But if you allow 1,000 square feet for a basement, and you want to build a 2,000-square-foot home, then you do have the 2,000 square foot to, to add a larger addition. It, it doesn't make sense to me. Second of all, when you have these larger homes, which this does happen because of the increase in, in the bulk and mass of the home, the price of the house is going to go home, go up, the property value goes up, the taxes go up, and it becomes less affordable. To me, it's just, and I'm not saying that we have to do away with it, I just think that it needs to be looked at, because now we, as I say, the ADUs, we don't have to count, they get a free pass as well. So, I respect my fellow commissioners, and usually it's a six-to-one vote up here anyway, so, and that's okay. But anyway, those are my feelings.
Vice Chair Birch?
I just want to respond to the question about reducing the massing, and I'll just tell you why I think of it a certain way. Other commissioners may see it differently. Below-grade construction is extraordinarily expensive, and so, if a lot only, if the FAR will only support a 2,000-square-foot home, no, there are very few people who are going to say, I will build 1,000 square feet in the basement and 1,000 square feet and leave it at that. They will forego the basement, and all 2,000 square feet will be above grade because that's cheaper construction. So, ultimately, we still wind up with the same bulk and mass. I think when homeowners do that cost analysis, that's where that usually comes. That's how I was looking at this, is why it stays the same.
Commissioner Sordi?
I just wanted to ask a question, and maybe I should be embarrassed for not knowing this. So, I think a couple of times now, Commissioner Barnett has said that FAR does not apply to ADUs. Is that just attached ADUs, where I believe the maximum square foot are just 500 square feet, and then you are not to count that as part of the calculable floor area? Does it also apply to detached ADUs where we can't count those as FAR?
So, I'm going to pass this on to Mr. Mullen, but the, the short answer is it depends.
Thank you. So, there's two different product types. There's accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. The town code for junior accessory dwelling units, because those are contained within the house, they're subject to the floor area limitations or the floor area ratio of the house. So, those aren't exempt from floor area. An ADU, whether attached or detached, up to 800 square feet of it under our current code is exempt, and potentially up to 1,200 square feet, which is the maximum size that we allow, is also exempt. That was a decision made by the council to help encourage smaller homes and more affordable homes by size by providing other opportunities to, based on the size of your lot, to get another bucket of floor area to be used for an ADU.
Okay, so the, that stretch from 800 to 1,200 just depends on the size of the lot going.
That's correct. It originally started as 10%, a 10% bump, but as the state law evolved over time, essentially, we have to give 800 square feet. So, now, we start at 800, and then the spectrum rises up to 1,200, and that's the, that's the, beyond whatever lot size that is, I can't recall offhand, you just get a 1,200-square-foot bucket to use solely towards an ADU. It is possible to further complicate things. If you had a smaller lot with a small home on it and wanted to build an ADU to the maximum size, but the only amount of square footage that you got was that 800-square-foot bump because your lot was so small, if you had the floor area left over in the house because it's a smaller home, you could still build 1,200. You just need to pull 400 from the house.
Got it. And then, a quick follow-up. So, for a junior ADU that's attached, the, I believe the max is 500 square feet.
That's correct. So, JADU has to be attached.
And it does count?
It, it is subject to the floor area ratio of the home.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think that I, just adding on to that, we've seen the state laws regarding ADUs change pretty much almost every year for the past many years, so we can probably assume that that will continue to, to happen.
Yeah, you can, you can look forward to some ADU changes coming forward through the zoning code amendments sometime in the near future.
I have a question for the Town Attorney, just about the current language of this code, and do you feel like the use of below-grade square footage is allowed in residential zones as a means to provide hidden square footage in lieu of visible mass is necessary? I mean, today, if we were proposing this policy, how would you feel about that, that sentence?
Starting from scratch, my inclination would be to put it under a purpose section, and then there would be something explaining the purpose of the ordinance, and then the regulations. regulations would stand alone.
Okay. Thank you. So my follow-up question for commissioners is that, how do, how do we feel, I mean, does anyone feel like we are in a consensus in wanting to make some sort of recommendation about looking at this in lieu language or not? I think that Vice Chair Birch and I are because we've banged our heads against the wall a lot regarding this. I think Commissioner Barnett seems to have a little more tolerance for this than us. But is anyone, does anyone else have any, you know, is there any consensus on that?
I could see where we could possibly reach a consensus by taking the major points of discussion regarding potential changes to the council, and let the councils decide if they want to act on that and consider it. Because we're not going to solve this situation here, but I think we've come up with a lot of good ideas.
Okay. Does anyone else want to add or say anything?
My thought is to largely leave, my recommendation, if I were to make one to council, would be to largely leave the language of the statute intact with one proviso, that is, with respect to the in lieu, if there was a way to, as maybe Town Attorney indicates, show that this is the policy of our town to somehow create the least massive structure possible while still allowing people to build, preserving smaller homes, those types of ideals. I don't know that in lieu is the right approach to do that, but somehow within our policy documents indicating that this town is still, it's important to us to maintain those types of smaller starter homes, I think that would be advisable. But aside from that, my recommendation would be leave policy intact.
Does anyone else want to say, add anything? No? Okay, I do think that the, it would be much cleaner from an interpretation standpoint if the, this section of the code was changed to have this purpose, I mean, as the Town Attorney described, have the purpose and then the actual, like, actual code, part of the code that is we have to interpret. That would be helpful from our perspective, I think, as a commission with regards to how we make decisions. But I do appreciate that this in lieu language is in other town documents that do, you know, guide some decision-making, hopefully. So, okay, so that being said, do we have to?
It'd be helpful if you did a motion.
Yeah.
I mean, I didn't hear that there was a majority that was interested in really changing it but for this potential scenario, but that doesn't stop other folks from making motions as well, moving forward on different topics.
So what type of motion, okay, so before we decide what to actually have in our motion, what type of motion would we be, would we even be making, asking Town Council to consider our discussion tonight with regards to X? No, sorry.
Right now, this item was only noticed as a discussion, so if the Planning Commission is going to take any action, I recommend that it go on a future agenda.
And so we would need to make a motion to put it on a future agenda? No, sorry.
I think it depends if the Planning Commission is planning to make a recommendation to the Town Council.
Chair, my thought would be to move to forward our discussion, vis-à-vis transcript and/or audio, audio advice to Town Council, and they can make a determination whether they would like to see a change made.
Is that a, is that like a motion, I mean, a thing we're allowed to ask or do as a body?
Alternatively, I mean, if you want to ask staff to come back with a proposal, that could come to you for discussion at a meeting.
We're not coming back with a proposal until we have direction from the council that they want to move forward with this. So we need to move forward with that, or we can bring it back to another one so that if they want to, if you're not comfortable with the motion as it currently is. Because ultimately, this discussion's been helpful, and I think we have direction, we have a potential path forward. We then will, you know, work with the town manager, who will then speak with the mayor to see if and when they want to bring this discussion forward, or whether it goes on the, you know, previously we do strategic priorities for these types of items. So I think that's a little bit up in the air, but I know the commission wanted to have the conversation, so, you know, I don't see this going forward to council before end of the year, clearly. But ultimately, it's, we'll, we'll figure out how to package that up through the town manager and the mayor at the time, and figure out if there's interest in putting that on an agenda.
Okay, so do we need to, like, actually, this motion, do we actually have to vote on this motion, or do we, are we just good to go because we've now talked about it and they'll see it?
So it's agendized as a discussion of the town's regulations applicable to below-grade My recommendation would be that if the Planning Commission would like to recommend that the council consider changes, and the nature of the changes, that that go on a future Planning Commission agenda.
And absent that, you don't have to vote on the motion, and we'll carry forward the, through another pathway.
Okay, and then if we want to bring this up and make a firm, like, make a more, make a concrete recommendation to Town Council at a future meeting, we will talk about putting it on the agenda and then vote on putting it on the agenda to do that. That's the process. Yes, Commissioner Burnett?
Yes, because I think Commissioner Barnett's suggestion was very good, and how he ordered that this, I think it deserves a look at, and his words, how he, how he described the, I think it was, I think it was necessary.
Okay.
Well, I'm persuaded by the Town Attorney's comment that it's not properly agendized, and my suggestion would be that we just let staff proceed as Mr. Paulson suggested.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions before we close this item? Okay. Okay, so we will now be moving on. Thank you for, everyone for being here tonight and listening to our discussion and participating. And again, I do just want to, like, apologize for the confusion based on how we have to do these things, but hopefully the discussion was helpful and would encourage any submission of any comments to staff if there's ideas of how to clarify this for digestion by the public at future meetings. Okay, so we will now be moving on to the report from the Director of Community Development. Director Paulson, do you have a report for us?
The only thing I have is the last council meeting, the council considered the 14331 Capri, which had the zone change in the new house. So that will be moving forward. They've introduced the ordinance, and then we'll go back for a second reading, which will then, if adopted, lead to the demolition and reconstruction of a new home there.
Okay, thank you. And then Subcommittee, or actually, I guess before we move on to Subcommittee reports, there are, did we want to mention any of the commission and committee openings? No. Do we, we have many commission and committee openings.
Yeah, I don't have the deadlines in front of me.
I think it's Monday for all of them? Maybe, not. Okay, it's soon, so if you're watching this or you watch this recording and you would like to be up here with us, please apply because we need people on many of the, I think almost every committee and commission has some, some level of open, some sort of openings right now, so just put a call out. Okay, thank you. And then Subcommittee reports, in addition to our service on the Planning Commission, members of the commission serve on several committees, including CDAC, General Plan Committee, HPC. Do we have any Subcommittee reports right now? Didn't CDAC, did CDAC meet today? No. Okay. Commission matters, we will now move on to commission matters, and if, is there anyone that has any commission matters that they would like to share? Okay. Before we adjourn, I just would like, to tonight's meeting, I would just like, well, the commission would like to acknowledge the loss of a very important community member, Barbara Spector, and our vice chair will be sharing some words and acknowledgement of her service to the town.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'm glad you guys stayed. I know many of you knew Barbara for a long time, and I think we were all very saddened to hear about her loss, along with her major career accomplishments. Ms. Spector served on the Planning Commission at minimum six years, four terms on the council, and on a number of other subcommittees, and made many, many lasting changes in this community. I can tell you, I met Barbara when I served on the Historic Preservation Committee entirely two many years ago, many, many years ago, and she had reached out to me to see if I would be willing to put in an application for the Planning Commission. And so I think we all see how that's gone. I'm still here. She had also started a campaign for a little while about Town Council, and I do think I got her to back down on that one. But I will say Barbara did not back down on things that she was very passionate about, and she was very passionate about our community, about keeping Las Gatos thriving, serving a diverse community within Las Gatos, and I don't think I alone can thank her enough for her service.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing, and I would just like to say that we will be closing our meeting tonight in memory and honor of Barbara, and as someone who gave so much to this town and influenced so many of us, and she just really leaves a legacy of service and mentorship, and I would just like to observe a moment of silence before we adjourn. This meeting is adjourned.